Time it north. And I think it's probably just fine. Okay, this is the February fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting, regular meeting at six P M. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order and let's start with the budget of meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well called.
Oh, Councilmember Dumas here. Councilmember Edwards here. Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman here. All present, Mister Mayor.
All right, I declare a quorum. I have some comments about the agenda that was posted and distributed. Under minutes, we do have three sets of minutes to approve tonight. I didn't list them on the agenda, but Wes distributed them, so we'll. We have the regular eight minutes from June eighteen, January eighteenth, works out from January thirteenth, and the minutes from February ninth to approve. Then going down the agenda, we have Tina Cole on the agenda as the first item of new business, but because she has to drive back to Harrison tonight, I suggest that we move that item of new business up before old business and let her go first so that she can hit the road unless you have some burning desire to hear the rest of our meeting.
I am not sure.
I, on the road paving grant, just as a note, that I have resolution two thousand and twenty zero zero two to present that's tied to that road paving project. And then going down the list, ordinance, I had the building code update listed as two thousand and twenty-two oh oh two, that's actually oh oh three. I had the zoning ordinance listed as oh oh three, that's actually oh oh five. Got my numbering systems out of kilter when I was assigning the numbers. And then dropping down to the sheriff's contract, there is a, there is a resolution associated with that, it's two thousand and twenty-two oh oh three, so that'll come up as part of the business. So with those corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Vote to approve as amended.
Second.
Linda made the motion, Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Moving on to the minutes of the regular meeting of January eighteenth.
We're gonna do them individually or?
Does anybody, of, of the three sets of minutes that were distributed, does anybody have any corrections or additions?
We already reviewed and sent the corrections.
Okay. In which case, I'll entertain a motion to approve all three sets.
Make a motion, we approve the three sets of minutes.
Ken made the motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. You need a second to catch up.
I'm okay.
All right.
I'm there.
Going down to reports, planning commission.
The Holiday Island City Planning Commission has conducted twelve meetings since August tenth of twenty-one. We adopted the planning area map in September twenty-first, adopted the master street map on October nineteenth, and made the first review of proposed zoning regulations back on November ninth. This commission has had eight meetings to discuss, revise, and update those zoning regulations, and those are regulations for Title fourteen anticipated for municipal code. These public meetings have used over nineteen hours of time in our public meeting time. The H I C P C has the recommendations of over sixty pages of comprehensive text of the zoning map and a zoning map table for today's city council meeting. These regulations are not complete. Title fourteen includes other topics that we'll be covering at later date like planned unit development, buffering for new developments, off-street parking, outdoor storage, commercial accessory uses, outdoor food vendors, signs, blood damage prevention, and several other topics I didn't list. So there's a lot of work to do yet in Title fourteen. So tonight's the, just the first blush of getting it in place.
Right. Okay, thanks Lynn. Anything on Rodden?
No, not really. I hadn't talked to Rodney in the last couple of weeks, but I'll call him next week. But I do have an update on the ordinance that we passed to allow liquor by the drink. We do have a local restaurant that has filed for that permit.
Okay. That, that.
Farmhouse. Didn't start off on a bid, plus though he forgot to include the check. So he's, he is, he has sent the check, so it is under review.
That's practically the only thing that's important.
To Jerry, man, clean it, it is.
Okay, and I, I did, somebody, somebody brought up that, I don't remember who told me, but somebody brought up that the Mexican restaurant would like to have a permit too, but they were waiting for the city to pass an ordinance, so we need to get to those.
Well, somebody in here talked to somebody up there, and they were interested. And I talked to the younger guy, I don't know what his role there is.
Okay.
But yeah, at the time, they didn't, they had their beer license had been full, so I went there and talked to him.
Yeah. At least mention to them that, you know, that it's up to them if they want to apply for the license. Okay, anything, financials? Wes had published the financials for the, through January. Any questions or discussion on the financials?
Yeah, did we get a check from the county yet?
Not yet. We'll be talking about that. All right. I forget.
Make a motion, we accept the financials. We have to accept the financials. Make a motion, we accept the financials.
Okay.
I'll second.
Ken made a motion to accept the financial, and Lynn the second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unless you want me to audit it, I don't know. No.
If you have nothing else to do, go ahead.
I mean, go ahead and post them on the website.
All right.
I will say legislative, I have talked to legislative body, and they were wondering about what we had and everything, and they said, well, they'll do, they'll be, they'll do an audit, and there is no cost to the city if legislative body does it. If we hire a C P A, it won't be the C P A.
We don't need a C P A.
And they were working, they were, were going to be planning their schedule, and they may or may not come this year, they may wait and come next year, maybe two years.
Oh, please come.
I hope they don't, you know, schedule two days or something for our half a dozen numbers. Okay, thank you for the report there. Now we can move on to Tina.
Well, first of all, thank you for letting me be on your agenda, and I guess I should introduce myself. I am Tina Cole, I'm with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District.
You're a member of that, right?
Yes, you are. You're a new member. And what we do at the district is we have a program that helps folks that have been, lost their jobs, like through the pandemic, we have different programs, our workforce development, helps write resumes that comes, that division does that. I work in the community development, second of the organization. My official title is Community Development Coordinator, which is a fancy word for brand administrator. So it's, I forgot I'm brand administrator better, because that's what I do. And we represent nine counties and seventy-two cities, and in my position, I help the citizens in county try grants for projects for the cities.
Like what?
The steward preservation parks, C D B G, if you're eligible, that's something, some are community, some are not. And let's see, what other would you, my main focus is federal mitigation grants, immigrant that has an mitigation plan, that hazard mitigation projects, just about all of federal. I just got awarded the Department of Justice grant, that was a new one for me, but I was very excited. We have five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a addiction treatment program for teen judicial. I was excited. And, but what I'm here for tonight is Carroll County applied for a grant to develop a hazard mitigation plan a couple years ago, and it is now complete. It has been approved by FEMA and in adoption, so that's why I'm here, to ask you to adopt the resolution, to adopt the plan. And this is your copy. And what the plan does is it makes you eligible for additional federal funding. So if you have a mitigation project in your community that you might have been, we can apply for funding, and it's a seventy-five point five, which means it's a seventy-five percent.
I hate to be ignorant, but what's mitigation?
Mitigation projects are like, if you got a low water crossing that floods every time somebody flushes the floor, mitigation would be to take that low water crossing out, put it in a bridge, or make better low water crossing.
Real mitigation would be to fix your sewer line, but.
I just read today that there's about three billion dollars over the next five years for mitigation projects.
So you're mitigating any problem?
Yes.
Trying to, use a fancy word for fixing something.
Well, we're trying to reduce the risk of damage and chance of loss of life.
Okay, so.
But they're more well-known for like the community sacred resources, and in the community, they have, yes, laws. And if you want, I suppose, them, it kind of gives you an example of some mitigation projects with them, and some ideas for mitigation projects.
We've had a lot of earthquakes here lately, haven't we?
Yeah.
What do you do? How do you fix those?
Well, it's not a whole lot of things, but there's some things that you can do.
In Oklahoma, quit fracking. I think the strongest ones only got a one point two or something.
That is some, just picture for sample, some projects that we've done.
Okay, that's, this, is this a, a brand-new plan, or is this?
This is a brand.
An update of one that was?
This is a brand-new.
Okay. I was curious as to whether or not the suburban improvement district had been involved in this planning before.
They were contacted when we submitted the application, and I believe they put in a letter of participation that they intended to process.
Okay.
Are many communities using sirens for tornado warnings?
Yes, my, Sarah, what about? I am in the keister to keep up.
That's my hundred and ninety-nine page.
Every time we have a threat of a tornado, people out here always raise the question of why don't we have sirens? And we're spread over seven square miles here, and hills and valleys, and those are designed for if you're outside, the warning that they give. If you're inside, chances are you're not going to hear them anyway unless you live like or underneath it.
I don't know, if you got a cell phone, you know it's coming.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's. That's a one.
They're, they're, they're hard to maintain, too, they're always going out.
You have to test them, at least weekly, some places test them at night. At home, they test them at noon every day, that's our, really, that's a maintenance issue.
Smart people out here have suggested that it wouldn't benefit our community that much, so.
It, it doesn't hurt, but you gotta maintain.
But it always comes up.
We got, yeah, the warning devices under.
Does Hi-Cid, have, have they ever developed a, a plan, are there safe rooms or?
Yes, there is, and I was gonna talk about that when we got to the regulation part, that, that Hi-Cid does have a emergency response plan, and they do have certain facilities designated as, you know, safe zones, I guess.
He says it's safe.
They have backup generators on all the key, you know, you know, infrastructure and stuff like that.
It's basically talking shelters if, if you are, if it's not feasible for people to stay in their home.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be fire, it could be tornado, it could be ice storm.
I think, I think we're fairly vulnerable because, like in Oklahoma, you got, you can build a shelter in your yard, here you have to like hire a dynamite crew.
We don't allow last.
And, and there are very few basins, really, the underground basin.
So. I don't know how many of you, are, are you, are you ready for us to jump in?
I'm, I'm here for questions and conversation, whatever you want.
I don't know how many of you have actually read the, the hundred and ninety-two pages, you don't have to read all of it because a lot of it is tables and, and appendix, appendices that don't necessarily even apply to us because it covers the whole state or whatever, but I didn't see anything in there that, that we would have, that I would have an issue with. It doesn't bind us to doing anything right now financially, which was my main concern with approving the resolution is, and we couldn't commit to something that we didn't have funded, so.
Off he went.
Where's Carl, where you need him?
Dan missed it last week.
This one doesn't cost anything to.
There you go. Hey, and another light came on.
There you go.
All right.
Dan, there is a section at the end about the long range plan of action items that we should take, and it looked like a lot of work, but it seems to me it's in like six years.
And it also said that you didn't have to implement anything until, you had one, once you come up with a plan, you have a year to implement it once funding is available, so it does have that stipulation in there. The, the reason why I like this plan is because this has been on my to-do list even back when I was on the Board of Commissioners. You know, we had kind of a skeleton emergency response plan here, but not nearly as detailed as I would have liked to see. You know, like, I'm not sure we would know what to do if we had a, you know, if the, if the fuel trucks from the lake up at the gas station, you know, would we know how to evacuate the area, would we know who to call to clean it up and stuff like that? Maybe Chris Lettinger, you know, as a fire chief, he may have a lot of that stuff on the bookshelf somewhere, but it's not in the general public's hand, and, you know, I've been involved, as involved in the community government here as probably anybody other than maybe Linda and Ken over the years, and I haven't seen a document that has hazard mitigation or emergency response in one comprehensive document, even who's going to do the communicating with the public if there is a natural disaster of some sort.
And if, if funding does not come available for you to do those projects, it does not hurt your eligibility and turn the plan, it's just when we do a manual update or our five-year update, then we can take some of those projects off and it's not possible for you, or we can add some on, it's just, it's a jury's discretion.
Will you give us some kind of notice that we need to be looking at this document and send you information in the future?
If we put it on top of the letter, is anything changed, or anything you'd like to add, or?
I think our biggest.
But if you'd like for me to come and visit some folks here, it's anything else on.
I think, I think our biggest risks here are flooding, landslides, and fire, because virtually every house in Holiday Island backs up to a wooded area that is just loaded up with fuel from leaves and down trees and branches and everything else, and, you know, we're, we're not going to get out there with rakes and rake the woods, but, and, and most of the backyards go, you know, down in a sixteen-degree slope, so you can't get a fire truck in there, you can't get a bulldozer in there, and, you know, I, I see that if, if we, if we get into a drought period where that, that really, really dries up, we could have, we could have some solvents. Landslides, we've already had one that we had to get FEMA money to, to restore a road that was.
We've actually had two.
Two, yeah.
Stabilizing.
Right. One, the landslide took the road out, the other one, the landslide ended up on top of the road, and we had to mitigate and stabilize soil and stuff like that. Flooding, actual flooding, not so much. You know, if, if anything ever happened to Beaver Dam, you know, it would probably be good to know how many of us would be underwater, although the, your, your plan here says that the biggest risk is sixty miles downstream if the dam were to breach.
Start slowing down.
Yeah, when it, when it hits Branson.
Starts cooling up.
Yeah.
You know, it hits Branson, the dam, and Branson, then it'd be, yeah.
But I'm sure, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I mean, the chances of it happening, I think you, in the table here says it's like less than two percent or something, but if it did ever happen, I'm, I'm sure that there are some low-lying areas along Hattaw Creek and stuff like that that would be in serious trouble.
Well, there's a lot of property on the island, on the whole front of the island.
Yeah.
Right side.
Yeah.
So it would be good, it would be good for us to know, to know, excuse me, what the elevation, you know, what, what's the safe elevation for Holiday Island if, if the dam were to breach, and then have a mitigation plan or something for anything that's lower than that elevation.
Yeah, I'll get them up to the top of Rocky Top, you will get.
And what we can do is we can have the core of engineers come and help us and tell us what all those spots are, and they can help get down all those mountains, it's their responsibility.
Beaver would be in pretty big trouble.
So. A question, you were talking about fire risk, which I've always agreed with you on that, I mean, I think that's our number one risk, or two, always asked it, and, but you just mentioned wildfires, down here is your last item, and you mentioned the Firewise program. I, you know, I, I don't know specifically, but I thought all of our Firewise money had been more or less cut off.
There's, there's, I think the grants are very, very small.
Or they're rare or something.
It's more of a program of community involvement, to get folks signed up to do the program and, and teach you how to fire through the home and property, so at least you get it away from the house.
Well, we did have, we used to have the fire department would come to your house and give you an assessment.
Yeah, that was.
And they would also, they had the chipping program going on. Fire department.
And that's how they got the chipper.
But now the chipper is Hi-Cid, so it's operated by the.
Fire department.
I haven't heard anything about Firewise for ten, ten, fifteen years.
It's like it's non-existent now, where it used to be very.
Firewise, there's probably, there's, Firewise probably has a different, two different definitions. Fire, there's Firewise as a program, and then there's Firewise as grants.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, the district used to get like ten thousand dollars a year through Firewise as a grant, and that's what they ran the chipping program.
To do stuff with, to actually be able to offer services that would mitigate problems.
Hundreds of dollars, not thousands of dollars.
So is money available?
I honestly don't know yet. This new infrastructure bill has kind of money out there for.
Yeah, they can figure out what to do with it.
Yeah, I got a little bit more money tomorrow, I got it today.
We, we, we find out, we do qualify.
But wildfire, the actions. So, you know, it won't be coming down, but.
We'll keep it within.
Is that all in that document?
That, that, the four hundred and seventy-six. We got a book, I said, four hundred and seventy-six.
So you tell me, I gotta read it, huh?
Yeah, no.
So are you getting some of this government money for projects?
We don't get, we apply.
Oh, you apply. Just, but through government programs, is that your value, federal government programs?
From what I can tell, a lot of those funds are just being put into programs that are already in place, they're just increasing the amounts of damage, and some, some of the additional programs, some of it's just standalone money for certain things, because I don't know if you talked to Dan, but we, we missed the vote on getting any money as a city, so.
We don't get any of the, we don't get any of the American Rescue Act money, because the way the legislation was written, how much you get is based on your twenty nineteen actual spending or your twenty twenty budget, and we weren't a city until December of twenty twenty, so since we had no budget and no actual spending, we are not eligible. We've been told that by everybody at the state.
Well, see, Mike, because it's based on public.
I sat in on a C D T G workshop a couple of months ago, and based on the criteria for that, is if we were, we would be eligible for any of that money because of an understanding we've got to be fifty-one percent low in moderate income, which we're far above that. There is a factor of having a certain percentage of senior citizens, but we probably beat that.
Probably. Every day, just sixty.
Let me, let me clarify what I was saying. The way, the way the legislation was written, the amount of money that you get can't exceed seventy-five percent of your budget or your actual spending, and that, that's, you know, that was, and because they couldn't determine what our cap would be, they made us ineligible.
Seventy-five percent was zero, zero.
There was one, one city, you know, we were the only city in Arkansas that didn't qualify, and then there was one city in Arkansas that turned the money down.
Oh, we had several.
Oh, yeah?
We had a couple that didn't want to pull with it.
Yeah.
Send it to us.
Well, and then we got little communities like Everton, they got, I can't even remember exactly, it was like less than thirty thousand dollars, and they're like, we had no real impact from COVID, we brought some in, some in, I turned, cleaning wipes for the community center, but we didn't know what to do with this.
I think Beaver got twenty thousandish essentially.
Yeah, I think. You're reading the spread, you got, you know, four hundred or something.
I think they, they just completed the final rule, and actually, we're going down Friday to get to the workshop on some of the things that they're clarifying in the final rule, so I may have more information. If they.
If they end up with an idea that they can't otherwise give away, let us know.
Well, we'll just sneak in the back door and get some more.
We did.
Got a big tin cup.
We did, we're, we're, we are doing one kind of backdoor thing, and that's that the state did a survey, a sewer and water need, infrastructure need, need survey. um, a sewer and water need, infrastructure need, need survey. And we did participate in that. And, you know, we, we said we need seven million dollars. And we're, we're still, um, word is, we're still, there's still a potential that we could get something, but, um, no actual word on it.
Well, and as I say, as I get the infrastructure bill worked out, I, I don't, I'm guessing it won't be this year.
Yeah, the infrastructure bill is different from the.
Yes.
The, um, the original, um, Rescue Plan Act. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just found that page I was looking for where it says the evaluation update to begin approximately three to five years after approval. Right, we don't have immediate commitments.
We don't have to do immediately, but it was on my to-do list anyway, that's why. I don't have any problems at all with, with you guys passing the resolution. So if we're ready for that, I will, uh, we, we, I will ask Wes to read the resolution.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. A resolution to adopt Carroll County, Arkansas Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas all areas within Carroll County are subject to various hazardous events, natural and man-caused, with a potential to cause loss of life and property damage. And whereas under the Disaster Mitigation Plan of two thousand, the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA require the local jurisdiction to have a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan in place as a condition to apply for future federal mitigation funding. And whereas Carroll County and its jurisdictions, with the assistance of the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District, MWEDDO have researched and developed the Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan attached tier two. And whereas by participating in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, Carroll County and its jurisdictions are eligible to apply for Close Disaster Mitigation Plans. And whereas the Director of the Office of Emergency Management, or is or does he be, is appointed to assure the Hazard Mitigation Plan is reviewed at least annually and completes a mandated review every five years to be submitted to the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management, ADEM, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA for review and updates. Now therefore, we have resolved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that the city of Holiday Island hereby adopts these portions of the Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan relating to and protecting its jurisdictional areas against all hazards as developed in the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the purpose of building a safer community by reducing vulnerability to such events.
Okay. We have motion to approve the resolution. So Lynn, Terry made a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn made the second. Uh, any discussion? So Paul, Lou?
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Bittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the resolution passes. Um, I suppose you would like to take a copy back, back with you? You, any chance you have your stamp with you? Uh, you're gonna stand, just sign a, sign a copy and we'll give it to her then. We'll have another copy to sign for our, like, this. Thank you for coming over. Now we have your name and know that you're tied to grant applications. You can, like, do you have a, by any chance have a business card?
They're holding inside the binder and I've got some more.
Okay, right. Then we'll, we'll have you on speed dial.
You, I love it.
I don't know, I'm looking for a location for sheriff contract. I'm gonna head, it's lost there, point zero zero one.
That's an ordinance.
Oh.
No, it's a resolution, but there was, I, I had to make some corrections on those.
So there was oh, three down here.
Okay, and here's your copy.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to take the.
Oh, okay, problem.
Thank you.
Anytime you want us to come visit, just let us know, we like to come and.
Okay.
Give you our spiel.
We do it once, daylight.
Okay, then moving on to, or moving back to old business, rural paving project.
If you want, we haven't done a minute yet.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you all got the letter that I, the memo that I.
Yes, I did.
I didn't check your email this afternoon.
Yes, it was a bit about forty-five.
Well, then I'll, I'll just explain to you. I, I sent the memo out just so that you'd have some advance warning. But, um, we are still having problems with the county relative to getting our, um, road tax money. Not so much for this year, but for last year. Um, I suppose because there's turnover in personnel at the county, um, it's, there's, you know, it's almost like we got the clock reset. And now the newly appointed collector, um, doesn't know what to do, can't get anybody to tell her what to do. Um, based on the resolution or the ordinance that the county, um, forum board passed, um, she has us in the system to start receiving our share of the property tax or the road tax money um, in March, so, you know, but that, whatever they collect in March gets distributed in April. So we should see money on April, you know, in April. And that's straight from the horse's mouth, basically, the collector.
Is that just for one month of March?
That's for whatever they collect in March. She didn't say anything about February or January or February? And when Wes asked her about last year, she said, well, the books are closed for last year, so I don't know what to do. And I, quite frankly, I've been saying this for six months, that the, the county were now, you know, eight or nine months, that the county was spending our money every month because they weren't sending it to us. They weren't putting it in the bank. So, uh, and the tax, the tax collector, to my knowledge, has no reserves that she can dip into. So it's going to be up to the treasurer and the county judge. And the forum board again, to give the collector instruction as to where that, you know, how much and where that money is going to come from.
And I can imagine that bookkeeping wise, she probably hasn't done how to record it in whatever financial system they have.
I don't know. Why, why, why are we any different than the other city?
The collector is the one that figures out how much we should get and tells the treasurer.
We've been doing that forever, city and the county for, forever. And we're no.
Going forward, going forward, I don't think there's going to be a problem. It's getting the money for last year.
And the county's got a reserve.
Well, and that's why I said it's gonna, the, the collector has no authority to dip into the county reserves. At, at any rate, Jack's back involved again.
Yeah, but the ordinance, they need a ordinance package.
He, he said he was gonna get everybody in one room together at one time and they were gonna hammer it out. Because we were back to the old, um, I can't, you know, I send somebody an email and they didn't respond. And I've called somebody and they won't respond. And, you know, it's like they live in different states or something. They can't, you know, I guess they can't talk to each other over there. So Jack was gonna get everybody together in one room and they were gonna hammer it out. But I'm assuming that it's going to take another ordinance from the county. Consequently, we, we have, you know, we have the invoice for three hundred and seven thousand dollars for our portion of the paving program, you know, through the, through the grant. And, um, at this point, you know, Wes and I were trying to figure out how we can manage this if we don't get that money from the county. Cause we, you know, originally we were planning on spending two hundred and fifty thousand. And when the actual bids came in, it, it jumped up to six hundred and seven thousand for the project. And then, you know, we figured, well, if we get that money from the county, then we'll still be okay. You know, with a, with a transfer from the reserve fund, we can still cover it. Uh, but now we can't count on the money from the county in time to make a, the payment to the state that they need from us in order to release the contractors. I talked to, um, ARDOT this morning. And, um, they said that if we would send them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, like as soon as possible, then they would release the contractor to do five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the work, whatever that ends up being. And then when we send them the balance of the money, the other of the thirty-seven thousand, whatever it is, then, um, then they would do a change order for the contractor to release them for the balance of, of the money.
They're kind of changing the stories, eh? I thought they said that we sent them two hundred, the, the original stuff, he, he said that we gave them two hundred, we could get the rest of it later on. What, what happened to that story?
I, I don't know. I don't think that, I don't think that was the story.
I don't think that ever was the story.
I thought they would, would do anything unless we came up with all the.
That, that was what he recorded the last meeting. And we had.
We've, we've always had to, we've always had to come up with, um, three hundred and seven thousand. Ever since the, the actual bids came back.
I'd love to go back and find it, but it's, I thought there was, there was one thing he sent us that said that we had to forgive us, that we'd come up with two hundred or two fifty.
They've, they've always been willing to start the project with a partial payment. They've never been willing to complete the project without all the money.
That's what he said when he said it's good news and bad news.
Well, I know they're not, they're not gonna start the project until probably June.
But at any rate, they're not changing their, they're not changing their story. I'm just confirming what, um, you know, what they originally had told me.
Well, if they don't start till June, wouldn't we be able to provide the rest of the money by the time they got the report they needed?
Yes, and, and that, there, there's, there's a lot of, you know, there's still unknowns going forward. We have no idea when the contractor is going to come up here and, and the state has to know. It's, you know, once they release the contractor, then they'll put us on the schedule and advise everybody what's going on. Um, it may be that none of this is necessary. If they don't start our job till October, then we'll probably have enough money in the, you know, in the account to, to cover it. However, I personally can't commit to, you know, to doing a bunch of transfers out of different accounts. You know, I want to be able to cover the project. You know, I, I need to know that I have the project covered with your approval before I send them any money and let them release the contractor. Because, you know, it's illegal for me to commit to something we don't have the money for. So, um, if we, if we take, um, seventy thousand dollars right now out of the, given what we have in the, in the road fund right now, if we take seventy thousand out of the general fund reserve and twenty thousand out of just the general fund and make a loan basically to the road fund, um, like right now, if we approve that tonight, then, um, by the end of April, we would have enough money, or by the time we get our April distribution, we would have enough money in the bank to, um, to cover the whole project. And so that's what I'm asking for tonight in a resolution that we'll read here in a second. There's one other caveat. There's a sentence in the invoice that we got that said, um, something to the effect that be advised that the city is responsible for all costs, um, incurred in the project due to materials. In other words, the contractor can, if the contractor over, overspends the bid, we are on the hook for whatever he overspends. So I asked Jonathan, I said, what, what are they allowed? Is there like a ten percent overage allowance in the, in the bid or something? And he said, there is no overage allowed in the bid. If they can't complete the project for the amount that was bid, then they have to come back to us and ask for more money. And we have an opportunity to approve, you know, more money or, you know, negotiate some other outcome. Either, either, you know, holding their feet to the fire and saying, we don't think your reasons for overrunning your bid are legitimate. Or we can, um, you know, scale back the project to make up the difference or something like that. But I would, under no circumstances can they overrun the bid, send us the bill and expect us to pay it.
Right. That's important, but.
They have to come back with a change order and we would have to approve it.
Right. So.
Can you pencil the line through that sentence? So sign it, did I correct? Just pencil out that line? Put your initials on it when you sign it?
It's, no, it's not, it's not a contract, it's an invoice.
Oh, okay. All right.
The contract, you know, the state manages the whole thing.
Okay.
All we do is send them money. And, uh, but we have an opportunity to approve or disapprove any overages. So, so with that, I would like to have this resolution considered. So I will have Wes read the resolution.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash zero zero two. A resolution allowing for temporary transfers from the general fund and the general fund reserve to the street fund for the city of Holiday Island. Whereas the city of Holiday Island budgeted for a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar street paving project, project, of which three hundred thousand is to be paid through the state aid street program. And whereas the actual low bid is six hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. And whereas the city has anticipated receiving the city share of the Carroll County three mile property tax for roads. And whereas it is undetermined at this point when the city will receive these funds. And whereas ARDOT is willing to do the project in two steps, allowing for an initial payment of two hundred and fifty thousand with the balance due in April. Now being resolved by the City Council of Holiday Island, that the City Council for the city of Holiday Island approves a temporary transfer of seventy thousand dollars from the general fund reserve and a temporary transfer of twenty thousand dollars from the general fund, both to the street fund in order to complete a road funding paving, a road paving project. both to the street fund in order to complete a road funding, paving, a road paving project. The funds are to be transferred back into the respective funds from the street fund prior to year end. Passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve this resolution. And after receiving a second, I'll open it for discussion.
Make a motion to approve, uh, the resolution twenty twenty-two zero zero two.
Ken Mills made a motion to approve the resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ben seconded it. Uh, any discussion?
So when we start receiving the county money for the property tax for roads, uh, do we get, what, about twenty thousand dollars?
No, no. No, we, we don't really know.
We don't know. A good share of the funds will come in, our property taxes later in the year.
Yeah, based on what's collected at that time.
Based on whatever they collect.
Okay.
And, and, and we, you know, we budgeted fifty, or we were anticipating fifty-one or fifty-two thousand in the cash flow for this, you know, for this project, for last year and then April amount for this year.
Okay. So they, we'll get at least this year's portion.
Yes.
Which could be used to replenish.
Yeah.
The funds.
Yeah. Even if we don't get the money for last year, we'll have enough money in the street fund by the end of the year to replenish these two.
We don't get it with them.
Uh, that's, that's what I was gonna say.
If, if they don't come back, if Jack doesn't come back with something pretty definite, uh, I'm gonna tell Justin to file the lawsuit.
Hell, no.
I mean, they, they've dragged this out for, they, they've danced this around for a year already. You what?
It's been going on since last summer, it's not like.
No, it's been going on since last March.
Okay. Um, okay, any other discussion on the resolution? All right, vote, all vote.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor. The resolution passed, so we have a plan for the road project. I have a copy to read. He signed that. Then we can move on to the next item. Lost my agenda. This is, this is zero, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two or three? Two. Road paving, uh, was, took this title fourteen, right?
No.
No. We just did the road paving branch.
Hmm?
The next thing on the item, on the agenda is, um, ordinance number twenty twenty-two zero zero three, rebuilding code updates. Now, the number may not match what was distributed because, like I said, I was getting these numbers straightened out, kind of.
Just building code or? He, he had reviewed the numbers a few months ago. I never forget a copy of that one.
The building code updates were distributed at least a week ago. It's on the website. Take it. Okay, um, I would ask Wes again to read, we're gonna read the, uh, okay. The next thing on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three. An ordinance modifying the building code for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Because the updates to the building code are rather lengthy, we will just read the ordinance. We won't read all of the updates to the building code. They will be posted.
Ordinance number twenty, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three. An ordinance modifying the building code for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Holiday Island passed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, establishing a building code for the city. And whereas the building code from time to time will be modified and updated to correct errors and add new information. And whereas additional language is required to the code to address drainage in manufactured homes, now, now being ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday, Arkansas, that attached corrections and additions being made to the city of Holiday Island building code. And since content, gun, and since current and pending projects may be impacted by these additions to the code, an emergency is declared to exist. Passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of two fifteen, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three?
So moved.
Lynn Dumas made the motion to approve the ordinance. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn, Linda? I wanted to say Lynn. Linda, seconded it. Uh, is there any discussion? I can just kinda add some comments here. There were, there were several, um, typos and stuff like that that I found while I was going through it. I've corrected those. There were a couple of minor updates to tables and things like that. The real important thing that, that changed in this update is adding a section on driveways, culverts and drainage. Make sure that we consider, um, you know, when we're issuing building permits and stuff like that, that we adequately consider drainage, um, relative to that construction. And then a section on manufactured homes, but to, uh, say, again, kinda restate that they need to be inspected.
Yeah, I, I reviewed all those changes that you made there, but I, I thought we couldn't use the emergency clause on this because it had to be read thirty, thirty times.
The, the updates themselves don't have anything to do with fines and penalties, so I don't. I think the original, actually even the original building code, I think we passed in one reading. Because we were under the gun to start, um, to, to start issuing building permits.
Okay. Okay, I'm thinking of the other one.
Yeah.
It's the sanitation.
Yeah, the health and sanitation and zoning one. We're gonna have to do in three readings because there's fines and penalties associated with that.
Can I just see a couple of what I think are typos?
No. Can save that for the next ordinance. What? On what page?
On page four, the, where you have the avenue been red.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it looks like you've gotta dash through the E of drop two.
I took that out in the final, in the, in the final version that'll be posted on the website. Um, I, I changed all the red to black and, and, and I saw that too and I took that little white out.
And more substantive, substantive is page seven, where you have the process.
Page seven, yeah.
Uh, and you added utility instead of, took out municipal and added utility services.
Right.
Originally that phrase said zoning or municipal service issues. And I think that word issues at the end of that is the important thing to conclude because you're, you're not, you're not asking the question, are there zoning or municipal services? You're asking if there are issues about those services.
Hmm.
Or issues about the zoning. That's the, that's the test.
Um, you, you.
The body says a test for yes or no.
You may be right, but I thought I took this right off of the.
Well, I was just looking at the one that's on the website to make sure what it said and it didn't have the word issues.
Okay.
In that, which will make it make more sense.
Right. I know we, we wanted to take out municipal because.
Right.
They're not necessarily municipal zoning or municipal.
It's, it's on there, Linda. My, my pull down didn't show it. The box wasn't big enough.
It didn't show it on.
Yeah, your box isn't large enough.
Ah, that's the deal.
The text is still.
If it's printed out, it doesn't show.
The box needs to be stretched vertically.
Uh.
Or stretched horizontally.
I got it.
Okay.
It's there.
That's why it was there.
I will make that correction before we post it.
Okay.
And it's on my version of the software, the boxes are disjointed. So be sure to look at your PDF and make sure they're still connected.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I, I had to do some finagling on that.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Aye.
Okay. Then we can move to the vote, all vote, and then we'll read another motion on the emergency clause.
Yeah, and do we need to, uh, suspend reading of the?
Not with the emergency clause. It's.
Okay.
It, it automatically goes into effect with the emergency clause.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor?
Okay. So the ordinance passes and since there's an emergency clause, uh, I'll need a motion to, uh, approve the emergency, declaring the emergency.
I move we approve declaring an emergency for this order.
Linda made a motion to approve declaring the emergency. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? I guess we vote, all vote with that too.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor?
Okay. Get the other copy. I think I gave that back to you. Did you? Did you have any roll on copy of that? Did anybody see him give it back to me?
Now, here's.
Cause I thought I ran two copies of this, but maybe I didn't. I'd like to get another copy for the final.
I mean, I mean.
I could, we can run another copy. Okay, that's, now we move on to, to zoning ordinance. I, I have, I ran copies and then they had the numbers on them.
Okay.
The ordinance numbers, that's fine. All right, moving on. The next thing on the agenda is, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five. An ordinance adopting title fourteen zoning, adopting title fourteen zoning in order to clarify zoning regulations, establishing fees and penalties for violation thereof and for other purposes for the city of Holiday Island. And since this is sixty-some pages, we will again just read the, uh, ordinance and not the entire zoning regulation.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five. An ordinance adopting title fourteen zoning in order to clarify zoning regulations, establishing fees and penalties for violation thereof and for other purposes for the city of Holiday Island. Whereas pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six four sixteen, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, the HICPC, has determined it necessary to develop zoning regulations for the entire area of Holiday Island to provide districts of compatible uses for unified developments for the elimination of non-conformants and for other matters of general welfare of the city. And whereas the city council adopted ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two, establishing the Holiday Island Board of Adjustment on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, that is pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six four sixteen, fee one and following. And whereas the city council of Holiday Island now found finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island to adopt title fourteen zoning regulation in its entirety, including the zoning map and zoning map table and specific text from ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two. You better provide further clarification of terms and uses for zoning. And whereas it is a desire of the city council that said title fourteen zoning be formally adopted by ordinance, now therefore being, yet ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, as follows. Section one, title fourteen created. Title fourteen zoning regulation is hereby created, including the zoning map and zoning map table appended in its entirety to the Holiday Island Municipal Code and attached here too. Section two, repeal ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two, establishing the Holiday Island Board of Adjustment is hereby repealed and replaced in its entirety as incorporated in title fourteen zoning. Chapter fourteen, point six, Board of Adjustment. Section three, organization. The city recorder treasurer shall maintain two signed copies of this ordinance and a digital image for public inspection. Separability. In event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, definition, fee, fine or other provisions or portion of this ordinance or title fourteen zoning shall be addressed invalid or unconstitutional. The same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance or title fourteen zoning as a whole or in any part or provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional. And the remaining provisions of the ordinance of title fourteen zoning shall be construed as if such invalid, unimperable or unconstitutional provision or provisions had never been contained therein. Passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this fifteenth day of February, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, he did give the copy back to me.
Okay.
All right. I would entertain a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five.
So moved.
Second.
Um, Lynn made a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two zero zero five.
First reading.
First reading. Jerry made, um, the second. Uh, is there any discussion?
I want to hear Wes read some of this table.
Yeah, no.
How long is that table? Oh, the table is five thousand two hundred and thirty-two lines. Okay, no.
Jerry's gonna read it?
No, Linda is.
By the next re, by the next, uh, meeting, you know, I would commit it to memory.
You want it on there?
All right, back to, back to business here. Uh, is there any other discussion? Vote, all vote.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Then it passes on the first reading and we will put this on the agenda again for the, um, next meeting. next meeting. So hang on to that for now. All right, next thing on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-two zero zero four. I'm not going to present an ordinance tonight on on the health and sanitation ordinance. We can discuss it if anybody feels a need to, but I sent a copy of it to our city attorney, Justin, to review. Um, he said that he had just recently done a complete Title eleven or whatever this title is.
Title five, I think.
Five, Title five, um, for for another um city. And he said there was a lot of things fresh in his mind about it, so the timing was good for him to look at ours. So rather than doing a first reading on an ordinance and then, you know, ending up with maybe a major rewrite to, you know, to our proposed health and sanitation ordinance. I'm going to put this off until I get feedback from Justin. We can call a special meeting at any time to consider the ordinance, to get the clock ticking. Um, once I get that rewrite, and I think it would be a little premature at this point to uh to try to deal with an ordinance. There's some, there's some other issues we need to address too, like um not not pertaining directly to the ordinance, but kind of getting our ducks in a row as to what's gonna happen the next day after we pass the ordinance. We're, you know, we have to notify the, you know, the customers. We have to notify the current haulers. Um, you know, we have to negotiate a fee structure and everything with Carroll County. So um it's probably good to take a deep breath and and do a little, a little more homework before uh before we pass the ordinance.
But it's still gonna be a ninety day process.
True.
To get the ordinance.
I thought that's why we were having, you know, the first reading.
Yeah, it's it's the potential for a major rewrite that that, you know, made me put it off, you know. And like I said, you know, we can call a special meeting the day after I get the rewrite back from uh or the the uh review back from the attorney. So we're not putting this off indefinitely. And I think the good news is that in the meantime, you know, some things are being handled with uh with problem properties. So anybody have any other discussion on?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I thought the way we left it, was it last week? I can't remember when we were talking.
We had a work session, yeah.
Talking about it at work. I thought the way we left it was that we weren't going to allow crash burning.
Crash burning? We're not.
Or yard waste.
Crash. Yes, that's, yes, I, the good you brought that up.
I read that and I liked.
When I, yeah, we talked at length about in the in the workshop about, you know, banning burning, open burning, period, is the.
I mean, we were just talking about lawn fires.
Yeah, the best and safest thing to do. However, we also talked about the fact that we're not really giving people an alternative.
Right.
So so, you know, that almost makes the ordinance unenforceable. So um, you know, ordinances are subject to change at any point in the future. What I decided to do was to write the ordinance at this point to basically allow what kind of the rules have been in the past, that you can.
A little stricter.
A little stricter, but but still, you can still burn your leaves in your ditch as long as you call.
You said incinerator.
No. No. There's a section in there that says you can burn yard waste if you call, if you call the fire department, let them know what you're doing.
I had, it had to be certain distance too for many.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet. I I had a little question. I don't have it pulled up now, so correct me if I misread it. But you don't, we're not asking for a permit from the fire, uh, from.
Just permission.
Just permission.
Same thing.
Is he gonna keep, do we need to put in there that he needs to keep a log or something?
They keep a log.
They do?
Fire department.
Every time you call, cause I wouldn't wanna, something come up, say, well, I called the fire department, but they got no record of it.
And that, that was another thing that that it's on my list of things to do. We refer a lot to the fire department in that section of the code. And um I haven't sat down and talked to the fire chief about this and to get to get his input and opinion on it. But um I tried to.
By the way, I think there's still a part of the incinerator.
Except as as provided in section five, that eight, ten or something.
Section B says we have to use incinerator.
No, he 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 changed it.
Doesn't qualify it for just.
He changed, he re- he changed it, cause I read the, she had to change, you know. And I couldn't support the one that said, because there's a lot of people like me that have a lot of yard waste tree trimming and stuff, and you can't haul it off, you know.
I would prefer it be hauled off if there was a way to haul it off.
Well, there is.
Well, I talked to Danny today um about whether or not we could um, we could set up a um, a collection area in the depot up there where people could dump their yard waste, so that you could at least call somebody and have them clean up your yard haul it out there and dump it. And then, you know, we mulch it and and um like you read Springs mixes their sludge from their service treatment plant in the, you know, chippings and stuff like that. And then, but, you know, sells it or lets people have it for mulch. So they don't have to pay somebody to haul their um, you know, their sludge to downtown. And so, you know, Danny and I both agree that there's some potential there. We'd have to see what it costs to dispose of the sludge. Would be an offset to the cost of managing a dump site here. Um, so there's some long-term potential there to be able to give people an alternative. But in the meantime, I thought we had to allow um burning of yard waste.
Well, I I've just looked at on page seven, paragraph B, versus the first paragraph of five oh eight eleven.
I didn't even want myself the latest, the copy of the latest version of this. I didn't.
I read it.
I did. And I, you know, I didn't plan on really taking it up, but I can, I can look at that, you know. Send me something where you have a question and.
Okay.
And I'll see if I can clarify it, because I didn't intend to imply that you had to have an incinerator.
Well, I, I, you know, I agree, we have to have some way.
Yeah. Okay.
But an incinerator is certainly a lot safer than burning in your yard or whatever.
But I, you know.
Hey.
An ADEQ of a pound incinerator, um, you know, it's not something a homeowner is gonna buy. That's, you know, typically behind the grocery stores where they burn their cardboard boxes and stuff.
Gosh darn it.
Okay, um.
Well, what what are we gonna do next with this then?
Wait, wait for Justin to send me his version of it.
So does that put us in next month?
I don't know how long it'll take.
Probably then.
I did tell him to put a priority on this over the zoning one, because I feel more confident that the zoning one isn't gonna come back, you know, like he uh covers red, so red. Full of, full of red markups.
Like sheriff contract?
Okay, uh, if there aren't any other questions, then we'll move on to the sheriff's contract. Actually, we shouldn't call it a contract.
Interlokal agreement.
It's an interlokal agreement. Um, did everybody get a chance to read that? I guess we should, we should read the resolution first and then we'll all for discussion. So Wes, oh, I did wanna make one follow-up comment on the ordinance, on the zoning ordinance. Um, I asked Wes to read it. I should've asked Lynn to read it, because Lynn did all the work. You know, it's kinda like, you know, a woman having a baby and then giving the baby to somebody else to have all the pictures taken.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I hope that's a good comparison.
But at any rate, um, uh, Wes, would you read?
Okay.
The resolution?
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three. City of Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an alliance with Carroll County and the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District, I C E, for law enforcement services and to take all other measures necessary. Whereas the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, believes that it is in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island to enter into an agreement for law enforcement services in the form or any forms substantially similar to the attached agreement for law enforcement services in the agreement. And whereas pursuant to authority authorized in the Interlocal Cooperation Act, the parties to the agreement have set forth their respective duties, obligations, and responsibilities with respect to law enforcement services. Now therefore, be as a result of the city council and the city of Holiday Island as follows. Section one, that the agreement between the city of Holiday Island, Carroll County, and the I C E is hereby ratified and approved as in form or substantially similar to the form as attached here to, as exhibited in section two. The mayor and the city recorder treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to execute the agreement on behalf of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, or to approve and make necessary changes to the same and to take any and all necessary action as may be required to fully completely implement the provision of said agreement. Passed and approved by the city council and by the city of Holiday Island on the fifteenth day of February, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt or to accept resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three.
I'll move we approve.
We'll have a second?
Second.
Linda made the motion to approve the resolution. Jerry seconded it. Discussion? Um, there is one caveat to this. First of all, I would like to say that uh, this whole process worked out very smoothly. Um, I, well, hush. Uh, the, you know, uh, we we came, we we came up with a draft, uh, interlocal agreement and I sent it to Justin. Justin made some suggestions. And then Danny and I talked about it and we said, well, you know, Tim Hutchinson's gonna need to see it too. So we agreed, why don't we just let Tim Hutchinson and Justin Eichmann talk directly to each other and hand around the details and come up with something that's acceptable to um all parties, which they did. And like a day's time, we had an agreement that we didn't need to worry about whether or not the other side was being wild. So I, you know, as far as, you know, cooperation between uh the the district and the city, this worked fantastic. Now, there is a caveat or another, you know, as Paul Harvey would say, the rest was a story. Um, we sent a copy to the sheriff to review in anticipation of going over there and having a meeting with him. They, you know, he went over with his lieutenant. And they want us to, by us being the city and the district, uh, one or both, to provide them with a vehicle. Because right now they only have two extra squad cars, extra being, you know, not in regular use. And they keep those for the reserve deputies to use. And um, so they don't have an extra vehicle to use. Now, I'm gonna put, take, extract some words out of Ken's mouth. The sheriff never brought that up before, but he never, he may not have asked a question before either. At any rate, that's where they're at today. Danny and I are going to meet with the sheriff. Dan, Danny has to, Danny Presley I'm talking about, has to um go over there and sign some papers and do some things that are the the final box to check on him being a reserve deputy for uh Carroll County. He's been in law enforcement his whole life. Most of his career was in law enforcement, so he's an excellent resource. Whenever he.
What if in Carroll County, about that, does he live in the county?
Yeah, but apparently that doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
I don't know that you have to live in the county that you work in. But at any rate, um, we, we're gonna go over there and and sit down and talk to the sheriff again. If we have to provide a vehicle, uh, they can get a vehicle off of the state, you know, through the state for about, I don't know, I think they said thirty-two thousand dollars. But then it takes another eight to ten thousand dollars to paint that vehicle as a, as a sheriff's vehicle and to equip it, you know, put the gun racks in and all, everything they do to make it a cop car. So we're talking about, you know, probably twenty thousand dollars to twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars extra expense for the city and the um, and the district. I don't believe, or I'm not aware of any way, that we could lease a vehicle and spread that cost out. Um, but that's something we can explore. The county does not lease vehicles. They buy them outright. So they're not willing to lease a vehicle and just roll the cost into our monthly charge.
What about buying the used two-year-old?
Um, there, there's, I guess there's all kinds of possibilities, so we'll have to see.
Who would the car belong to?
That's another question. Danny and I talked to all of them.
I'd hate to have to buy that car every year.
We're not gonna buy that car.
No, with the miles that we would put on, a stipulation would be that the car would stay here and in Holiday Island. It would only be used for patrolling in Holiday Island. And with the mile mileage that they would put on in a year's time, we figure the the car would be good for at least six or more years.
The county pays for the gas.
The county pays for the gas. The county pays the insurance.
Uh, one of the other things I thought was included in the, Justin was supposed to send his town, proposed kind of our agreement to Tony Rogers to get it reviewed before I put it.
Well, we sent it to the sheriff, so if the sheriff thinks that Tony Rogers needs to see it, that would be up to him. The the sheriff's is the name on the on the agreement.
Well, the county judge names on there also, so.
I'm sure that they'll all get a chance to see it. I think the court in court would have to approve it before the judge can even uh you know, even sign it.
Do we know if they're gonna get it? If we approve it, when's I C E supposed to approve? When do I need it?
Two months or last week of this month.
Yeah, yeah.
The third, they've already approved the one they got, so.
Paragraph four says, the purpose of performing.
Paragraph four says, "The purpose of performing said functions, the county shall furnish and supply all necessary labor, supervision, vehicles, equipment, communications, and dispatching facilities. Last sentence, said vehicles and equipment shall remain the sole property of the county." It doesn't say anything about us buying a vehicle.
Well, that's because this was come up.
This came up after the contract was drafted.
Oh, you never.
All right. Sheriff said that they didn't need that.
Yes, that's why we shouldn't have gotten this done before the county did their budget.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure the county wouldn't, you know. If you remember, you know, way back, way, way back in our budgeting process, I had baked into our costs buying vehicles because I was pretty sure that the county wasn't going to buy another vehicle for us now that we get all the sales tax money and the property tax money and everything else.
We got it.
They're not going to be as generous anymore as what they may have been in the past.
I was going to comment, but we have budgeted a sheriff's contract. And what the contract provides and paying and considering that we're already halfway, more than halfway through February with nothing done yet, there's probably enough money in the budget to do, to buy the car and pay the sheriff for the rest of the year.
Wouldn't we be better off paying a little more to the county and letting them buy their own car? But that seems a little messy to me. For us to buy a car that they're going to ensure and they're going to maintain higher, it seems a little weird. And I'm not sure insuring something that you don't own is.
No, I don't think, I don't think there's any scenario where we would end up owning part of a car. I think we would buy, buy it our half and, and donate it to the county.
Or just add it to the contract, the cost.
They, they're not willing to, at this point, the county is not willing to do it on time payment. They would, they want us to buy the car outright upfront because they don't, they don't have it in their budget to go out and buy a car and then get paid for it over the next five years, you know, in a monthly installment.
Well, like, could they possibly add a one-time cost or to the contract?
That's possible.
I think that, that just sounds cleaner to, to make a payment to them of twenty thousand dollars. They buy the car. That gets us out of the hole.
Isn't there something in here where the sheriff agrees to best of his ability to leave those two deputies sole duties here unless some emergency or whatever?
Wait, let me ask one other question.
I think I read that.
You only, you only get. In your cell, but. Both of them aren't going to be on duty at the same time, but they need two cars.
Well, that's a good point, but I, my point was that if we're, we're saying that they need to leave the car here and if they need, you know, some major incident or something somewhere else in the county.
Ain't no more.
Lynn says it's paragraph two. It's paragraph two.
There, you know, I think an argument could be made that we wouldn't want both officers patrolling at the same time so they don't need two cars.
Right.
But one of the big advantages to having two officers is so that the officer on duty has backup. And, you know, I guess we could expect the backup deputy to use their own vehicle, but that wouldn't be normal procedure from the mayor. Yeah.
Well, I mean, even though we've got this agreement to provide two deputies, I mean, if we had a major incident, he would send other deputies over here.
Yeah, I mean, that, that other deputy may be, you know, seventy miles away on the other side of the county. That's been the problem here all along is that, that if Aaron's not on duty and you have a problem and you call nine-one-one, they'll send another deputy, but it may take an hour for him to get here. And if there's somebody, you know, if there's a crazy person knocking on your window, you know, you probably don't want to wait an hour for the deputy to get here.
That's why the register.
That's why we, that's why we should have reserve deputies other than Danny Presley, who lives in Bentonville and at night that's where he sleeps. Why don't we have some people sign up for reserve deputies out here?
We did have it.
We used to, I mean, Bob Clay was, and he lived here.
And so was Jack Beaton.
Yeah, he lived.
It's, it's all possibilities.
But we've got to tell people that, that there is an opportunity for them to, you know, be a reserve.
Danny can, Danny can ask us with the shit.
Whatever.
We need people to sign up tomorrow.
It takes, it, it takes more than just saying, you know, I want to be a deputy, give me a gun.
Oh, I know, we have to be.
They have to be trained and certified and they have to be sworn officers and.
They have to be.
Yeah.
They, they have changed the rules.
Well, do we want to table the resolution until I get more detail and what might be a workable option on a vehicle?
I think so, because I don't, I don't see how we can authorize you to make those kind of things without us having oversight.
Especially if it's going to affect finances.
I mean, if you're talking thirty-five thousand dollars or forty thousand, forty, forty thousand dollars you're talking about. I'm not willing to buy them a car and give, give it to them if we're, if we're not going to have this contract for five years. You know, we're, I don't, I don't see us having a contract for five years.
Make it, yeah.
Does, does our twenty-two budget have a vehicle?
You know, if we got to buy them a vehicle, that just seems to get our own police department now.
One, I think it was built and two, they were not as much.
At one time, when, when we first did the contract, we were paying for the deputy and the car expenses. And it was just a flat rate.
You're talking about I C E's contract a few years ago?
Yeah. It was more, it was more than just the personnel cost. It was cost.
It was a, it was a monthly rate.
Yeah.
And there's.
I, I can't.
A lot of things have changed since then, a lot of things. And I, I'm totally sympathetic to the problem that the county is in because their, their revenue streams are limited just like the city. Now, they're maxed out of village, of property tax village. They can't get a, a sales tax increase passed because people won't vote for it.
They haven't tried.
Huh?
They have not tried.
Um, well, I'm told that they have.
You name one year since I've lived here that they've tried it. I've lived here eighteen years.
Well, the only one they tried was.
I'm, I'm being told, I was told that they tried in the past and very well made sure it didn't pass.
They have raised our personal property taxes.
We very well sent a vote to kill them.
The only prop, county property tax, the one we voted. You jail and that passed.
Now, costs are going up and revenue streams are kind of capped unless they can vote a, a resolution or whatever to increase the sales tax. So, I mean, we can, we can sit here and talk about it until we're blue in the face, but we can't make the county spend money on us. So, so I made a note here. Vehicle, look at using, at getting a used vehicle instead of a new one. Vehicle life versus contract life. I guess who would own the, the car? But I think I know the answer for that.
You're also going to have a new sheriff next year, Danny here.
Yeah. I don't know if that's.
They might live out here too.
Good or bad.
It'll change within probably in your section four. Is that section four is what deals with that vehicle? Your, your notes that you made.
Two of them.
What's happening is doing.
Two of the sheriffs.
That's probably not going to make any difference. We still got to go through four and four.
And I think a county judge candidate or two was out there too.
Good.
The last time we had a, the roads got fixed out here, when the county judge lived here. They don't know.
I will entertain a motion to table this resolution.
Make a motion to table resolution.
I need more information.
I'll second.
Tim made a motion to table. Linda seconded it. I think we can just do a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll table this until we have more information.
That's significant change.
I'm supposed to do all this and also be a gentleman.
They'll be counting.
Right down the back of it. All right. That moves us on to public comments. Any public comments? You've got three minutes. Come on, somebody's got three minutes or something.
Sit here all night, you don't have anything to say.
All right, well, thank you for coming and listening. Next scheduling.
Right.
Oh. Council member comments.
I have one. And it came up as a result of you talking about the county sales tax rate. And I just want to put it on the record. Carroll County is one of, I think, two, maybe three counties that have the absolute lowest sales tax rate in the state.
Yeah.
Out of ninety-seven counties, we have.
Half a percent.
Half, half a percent, point five percent in sales tax.
Increasing it to one percent would solve a lot of problems for the county and it would double our.
Most counties in the state have a sales tax rate of over two percent. And we're stuck with point five.
Yeah.
I think it's disgraceful.
Yep.
And they don't, and no one, no one even tries to pass it.
Yeah, they have.
Oh, it won't work.
They have tried.
I wonder what the process is. Do, do, can that be, can, can that be a citizen initiative?
Referendum from citizens can get it on the ballot.
Maybe we need to get it started.
Or the.
That's how those issues get on the ballot actually.
Right? Yeah, yes, the, the court sets it, but we can make it go to a ballot and force them to face the issue and put it on.
And that is, I mean, this is largely responsible for us having such lousy sheriff responses all across the county. We have a six hundred square mile county and we have about, what, seven officers on duty at any one point in time?
Oh, I doubt whether, I think we have seven officers total.
Yeah, I think it's three.
I think, I was thinking two.
And some of the, some of the deputies aren't controlled.
You're right, because I'm, I'm probably counting the lieutenants who don't do regular.
They got, they got all kinds.
And then you have, you know, all the people that work at the jail that don't patrol.
Right, exactly.
So there's very few patrolling officers.
I think a case could be made. And I think all of Holiday Island would vote for it.
A public safety tax that generally impaired well.
What?
A public safety tax that made.
No, no, I, I was here when we voted that in, that half, half cent one to build a new jail. Before that, it didn't have anything.
Probably the, the first opportunity to get it done would be in the twenty twenty-four elections.
Also, the federal government is giving away grants to cities or maybe even counties, I don't know, to add more officers, you know, because it's being, they were underfunded in some fashion or another. But that might be another avenue.
I guess this is all under the general category of commissioner comments.
Yeah, I'm done, that's all I have to say.
But, you know, there was, it made the news last week, K Y three news, that Carroll County is one of the few counties, I guess anywhere, that requires that their deputies purchase their own weapons. And they, I guess they were hiring a new deputy and the deputy asked the forum court to buy a weapon for him and the forum court turned him down because they didn't have it budgeted. And that person then went to the press with the issue and the next day, K Y three was down here with the filming crew while they were, while all the deputies were qualifying out at their range in Hell Ranch. And it was actually a pretty positive news coverage because the county had already been discussing changing their policy because right now they have to, every, every officer buys their own gun so they may have, you know, seven or eight different guns, ammunition that they have to stock. And so that would be a savings for the county. And then, but, but it was interesting that in all of this discussion, you know, the news and everything else, nobody ever mentioned that, you know, grant money to equip, you know, the, the police and that. There's got to be literally billions of dollars floating out there now with all of these COVID spending bills and everything that, you know, that they could come up with twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollar grant by weapons for the deputies, you would think, so.
Or for a fledgling city to buy a car.
Could be.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll add it to the list.
We, tonight has the first reading of ordinance oh five about the title fourteen zoning. I think somehow we need to encourage the public to go through that document. Take a look at the zoning map so that they can see what we're trying to do to make certain that we're trying to preserve the way we have Holiday Island. That especially if they see errors in the mapping that they think are critical so that we can be brought to our attention. How do we do that?
I, I don't, you know, I don't know how we do that other than the fact that I'm glad you brought that up because they're going to, I C E is going to be doing the envelope stuffing this weekend for the assessments. And they, they agreed that we can put a note in with the, in with the envelope. I have to draft that note yet and I'm going, I'm going to do that. And I intended to point out to all property owners that we have zoning ordinances, we have building codes, you know, we're, you know, we're going to be passing health and sanitation ordinances. So, you know, get ready, it's coming, you know, we're going to, you know, we're going to start enforcing some rules.
So is there, should we be making a change to the website? To say these are in the first reading, second reading, so people know what to act in? So it's easier for them to find it?
Yeah, it's, it'd be pretty hard to find the media document.
Right.
I agree.
Okay, so somehow.
Kind of like, kind of like we did for the building code. That free page stuff out there.
We have a page for ordinances, maybe put one that's pending, that same pull down.
Yeah, like the.
They're pending for approval because they, and we put ones out there that pass at least the first reading, nothing else.
Yeah, I'm a little bit surprised, maybe a little bit disappointed. Makes life easy for us if we don't get, you know, fifty people wanting to write the, the ordinance for us. But I'm a little bit surprised that we haven't had more public interest in some of the stuff we're doing. It's not like we're trying to keep it a secret.
But it's not, it's not just limited to, you know, well, what code did we assign? Did we assign it in R one or in R two or in R three or in C two or whatever? It's not just that, it's what you can do with your properties, the uses. That's where the real meat comes in.
Yeah, I, I have reason.
The sort of buildings and uses.
I would like to, I would like at least some acknowledgement from the public that they're paying attention to more than just three people. Thank you for being.
Your, your boss, we're paying attention. All right, is the broadband survey still across the town?
It is.
Will we put something there directing, you know?
So they write it into-
Compared to type to a different page with all of them.
Really, do you take that off and put a different message, like a banner message?
Yeah, I think this would be worth doing that.
Okay, I'll take the broadband down then, and, and we'll, we'll put something about pending stuff on that. And then link it to another page and maybe also include it on the government.
I didn't intend for you to do more work, but we've got to get it out there.
If you can crack the code of how to communicate to the public anymore, I think you could make, there's a fortune.
There's lots of social media, and it's fired up on politics, but somehow it hasn't fired up on paying attention to what we're doing.
They want, they want our-
We are limited, I think, as a city to, to use social media.
Social media, you know, my, my experience with social media is it's, 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 uh, very group-driven. You know, this little group is very active in this social media pod. This group is very active in this pod, but, you know.
That's why we call them groups.
Yeah, but nobody goes out looking for what's going on in the city, you know, and stuff like that, you know. In the old days, everybody got the newspaper, and everybody read the newspaper. I'm talking, you know, probably twenty-five years ago, but, you know, that's how you communicated. That's why most laws still say that you have to publish your notifications in a newspaper, as if anybody still reads a newspaper.
Well, we don't, we don't have one.
Yeah, so I, I don't know how to get the word out to-
Our advice should be, rather than complain after it's implemented, contribute while you still have a chance.
Keep good records of all, like Lynn did, how many hours we have been working in public view, uh, putting together some of this stuff. And then when people say that they didn't know anything about it, say, "Where were you?"
And I happen to notice that Lynn's map, which is the thing that is mandatory, had to have it. The latest version is version fifty-two.
Yes.
If that tells you anything about the work that went in on it.
Well, yeah.
It, it tells me that Lynn can't get anything right the first time.
Says, says the man that lost the agenda seven times.
Here's the laptop with the software. When you wiggle it too fast, it disappears, and you go, "Where the heck did it go?", so you back it up.
And I noticed-
That was intended to be light humor.
I get it.
And I noticed he sent something out this week at three AM.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, he's sleeping most than I do.
It had me done.
Okay, any other, uh, comments? Meeting schedules, or right now, the only meeting is, would be our next regular meeting.
First, second, fifteenth, right?
Third, fifteenth.
Fifteen, March.
Yes.
Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen.
So if you need a special meeting to cover anything, I'll call it.
That's all big and gaudy.
Any announcements? Yeah, Wes is gonna be gone, so if you need to check for anything, that's-
What are you doing, what are you doing?
Right.
This is probably, probably-
How many fingers was up?
Which fingers were up?
Yeah.
I don't want to announce it. I get it, yeah, yeah.
Well, you just did. Well, I've earned-
Most exciting birthday I've ever had.
Alright, any announcements? Other than the one Wes just made. I think there's a thirteen on the agenda, but it must be on a page I didn't print. What's thirteen on the agenda ordinarily?
Probably a jury.
A jury.
A jury, motion to adjourn, somebody, jury made a motion to adjourn. Lynn will second it, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Or you wrote all on it?
No, we don't.